Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, I was just trying to make it so, you know, I want Jeffrey to see.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, guys, you have to push the button speaking, so otherwise, otherwise move yourselves.
So this is mute?
Okay.
We're only gavel away.
All right. In accordance with five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chap- chapter thirty-one law nineteen seventy-five, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at town hall and serving the officially designated newspapers of the meetings annually, indicating that this meeting take place at the Milburn Board of Education Center at seven P. M. on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Have two oaths of office to be taken tonight, and then they'll be the roll.
We have David Bradford that's being voted to a class four member, correct, Eileen? Whoa.
Full member.
Full member, and Steve Cohen being was appointed as an alternate member. Okay, so if each of you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
Uh, David Bradford.
Do solemn swear or affirm.
Do solemn swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
The United States.
And in this state.
Under authority of the people.
Under authority of the people.
Do further solemn swear or affirm.
Do further solemn swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully, in faithfully and justly.
Faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Adjustment Member.
Of the Board of Adjustment Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Steve, when you get a chance, you can sign that, and then I'll notarize your paper and be good to go. Okay.
Andrew Hurd Johnny.
Here.
David Bradford. Gary Rosen.
Regina Truitt.
Neil Mino Roberts.
Here.
Stephen Cohen. Vice Chair Joseph Caulfield.
Here.
Chair Jessica Glatt.
Here. Okay, so first, I just want to announce that we have some changes to the agenda tonight. The first one is calendar four zero one four, the property location is nineteen Reeve Circle, the applicant is Allure. That is going to be carried to July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that will be.
The carry dates are to this meeting occasion, Eileen?
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be carried to this location, the Board of Education Building.
At seven o'clock on?
July fourteenth. Okay, July fourteenth, Milburn Education Center, four thirty-four Milburn Avenue at seven P. M. The next one, calendar four zero two eight dash twenty-five, the property location is third Jefferson Avenue, the applicant is Mark Stack Stackle, that matter is being carried to June thirtieth. Again, it's going to be at the same location, the Board of Education, Education Center, June thirtieth, at also seven P. M. And then the final application, the calendar four zero two three dash two four, location thirty-one Talbot Court, and the applicant is Gregory Tolchinsky, that is also be carried, Eileen, what is that being carried to? That's going to be carried as well to July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at this location, the Milburn Board of Education, Education Center, seven P. M. Okay, so moving along, twelve minutes for March thirty-five, does anyone have any corrections or changes? Favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those minutes are approved, and then we have one resolution, it's calendar four zero one two dash four, Aswin Mandra, fifty-five Locust Avenue, do we have any corrections or changes? I don't see or hear anything. Make a motion?
Make a motion to calendar four zero one two dash two four.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Sean Andrew Hurd Johnny. Gary Rosen.
Yes.
Regina Truitt.
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield.
Yes.
Jessica Glatt.
Yes.
David Bradford.
Yes.
So now up we have calendar nine seventy-four dash twenty-four, property is three eighty-nine Milburn Avenue, and the applicant is three eighty-nine Milburn LLC.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My Mr. Sir.
Yeah.
So this was Tony for you, and for anyone else who's going to be using that microphone tonight, because we are in a different location, it is imperative that each person speaks in the mic.
Almost like it has to take it out.
As we say in the biz, you have to eat the mic. Okay, so. Yeah.
You're welcome.
On number one side, you have to press that green button.
Hello.
There we go, perfect.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, my name is Anthony Sirsillo, I am with the law firm of Levitt and Sirsillo in on behalf of the applicant. Before this board seeing preliminary and final site plan for the proposed four new dwelling units. Garage, keeping the existing Lanya Days Spa, renovating the existing dwelling unit, and offering it a restricted unit. For the township. We require a deviance from the density requirement, and as a result, we require four yes, excuse five affirmative yes votes, and there are other variances that our planner will go through. We have three expert witnesses. Hello. Three expert witnesses we have, we have Richard Keller as a civil engineer, we have Chun Fang as the architect, Harold Malts as a traffic engineer, and then we'll call Richard Keller for the planning testimony. Madam Chairwoman, I may call my first witness.
Yep. Thank you.
Richard Keller.
Do you honestly swear or affirm the test? Do you see you truth, full truth, untruth?
Yes, I do.
Richard Keller, K E L L E R.
Closer, closer, closer. Closer.
Very close.
You have to really, very close, yeah.
Give the board members the qualifications and experiences you have for civil engineering and a professional planner.
Good thing we're past that COVID era.
Right?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-nine and ninety, so close to October thirty-five. I have science engineering from Rutgers University with a concentration in water resources and industrial engineering, and I also hold a master's in architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also adjunct professor in the School of Architecture, both graduate and undergraduate for approximately years. My licenses are in good effect, I have provided testimony before this board, the planning board, as well as approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey, I have offered planning services to the borough of Caldwell, as well as to the township of Long Hill, I was also the Long Hill engineer to the planning board in approximately years, I've also provided engineering consulting services to the board, the planning board, excuse me, in South Orange Village. Licenses are in good effect, it's nice to be back.
Your qualifications have been accepted.
Thank you. So I decided to put my drawings over there, I'll try to run back and forth and make sure the new board members could see them, and turn them inside, so if any public, Jeffrey's already relocated, perfect. So the property itself, and I hate using these things myself, some members of the board too, but I will occasionally use a laser, the property is designated as three Avenue, block twelve eleven, lot five, it is fifty by one hundred and fifty foot site that is located on the westerly side of, sorry, the northerly side of Milburn Avenue, which is County Road five twenty-seven, it's intersection with the westerly side of Spring Street. Fifty one hundred and fifty foot site, it's a parallelogram in shape, contains just under seventy-five, seventy-four hundred and twenty-eight square feet, or point one seven acres, and it's wholly B four central business district. So I have a couple of exhibits which I introduce, I think that the, our parking engineer is going to use it as well, so my first exhibit will be A one, I'll mark it in a second, labeled parking exhibit, it is near map dot com imagery, the photograph was taken June twenty twenty-four, the mid-morning, and this was prepared by Kate Keller dated March seventh, two thousand and five. In addition to showing the property in question, existing building, the overall site located, it also shows its context within the community, Mr. Malts will discuss its proximity to Municipal Lot Nineteen, which is business permanent parking, Municipal Lot Six, as well as available parking along the streets, also shown is Town Hall Plaza, Municipal Lot Five is shown on the same drawing. From that drawing, we are located at the west end of the, the westerly end of the B four district, the B four district ending was the Wells Fargo, now the Hearth, fifth three unit apartment complex, we're on that same block, so immediately next to us is the residential barber shop, next to that, Bakti Yoga, Bakti Yoga is right here, and then there's Kubik and Kubik hearings and opticians are there, although I see a for-rent sign, I know it was sold recently, so I'm not sure if they've been tenanted for much longer. Harth is located across the street, is the Baptist Church, church across on the east street is the Ethical Mattress, another public parking lot, actually parking lot that's associated with the Murray Consulting Building and one of their other retail spaces, work into the town, the Town Hall Plaza. The, on our street, on Essex Street, is a grooming shop and an early education center, fill up that block, people do park along that street to get access into the back door by Boga Barn, which is immediately to our left. The plan changes to any of the parking along Milburn or Spring Street as a function of this application. So just a little bit about the current tenant, the current tenant is Lanya Days Spa, the applicants are here to back up any of my factual testimony I'm going to give about their operation. Emily Swin is the primary operator and manager of the Lanya Days Spa, she and her husband, David Fung, own the property through an LLC, they are long-term resident of Milburn, they opened their first in two hundred, two thousand and twelve, further up Milburn Avenue, and in two thousand eighteen, late two thousand eighteen, they purchased the former, former America Cross building, which is the subject of this application, and rebranded themselves as the Lanya Days Spa. That building was built, I haven't found an exact date, it's a brick, a white brick building that was approximately mid twenties, twenty twenty-five, I haven't found an accurate date yet, I've got no dates in the twenties that that building was originally built, and then, as I said, it was occupied by the American Cross for a number of years. Services that clients offer in the Days Spa, which will remain primary occupant, the sole retail occupant of the, the white building in the front, they offer facials, massage and reflexology, dry saunas, body scrubs, body waxing, they operate basically nine thirty to eight P. M. ish, as required, seventy days by appointment only, primarily singles and couples, the manager is always present on the site with his manager or another manager.
Can you repeat slowly the hours of days and hours of operation, please?
Sure, seven days per week, eight, nine thirty P. M. to eight thirty P. M. ish.
Thank you.
The maximum number of employees occurs over the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and that is five employees, and that includes the manager, whether it's Emily or another manager. Since two thousand sixteen, four employees live at seventeen Rector Street, which is a legal, legal, three-family dwelling that is owned by the owner, so that's where their employees have lived and walked to work since they moved to this site, since even before they moved to the site. The Emily and the manager certainly park in the tandem spaces all over in the site, I'll find when I get there, otherwise, all others will walk for future, there is, there is parking reserved on-site, there's four parking spaces allocated to the Days Spa. The, I would point out that their prior resolution, when they designed the lot in the back, and along with the garage, actually just site plan approval to restrip the parking moved in, it was, it was probably a bump up in the parking before the B four district had the parking exemption, it's required to come forward, they did indicate that they would buy up to five parking permits for their employees, and they would continue to do so if required by this board. Delivers to the Days Spa are infrequent, basically about every two months, it might be a U P truck, otherwise only actually picks up the spa supplies, as well as any cleaning supply, bathroom supplies, et cetera, at local warehouses, it's to the site herself, the bridge from the site is picked up by David, or disposed of through his business, or it's taken by the people who clean the Days Spa, multi-weekly, multi-times per week. The, for the Days Spa, the, they will continue to use that for the coverage, for the apartments, they'll use solar, and the spa intends to be open during the construction of the project if this board were to approve it. I think that covers the salient operational information about the client, and again, my client's here if the board wants any confirmation or clarification of those hours.
Question, is the laundry service, is it, is it a delivery kind of service, or are they doing it on-site?
That's a good, I don't know if they do it on-site, it's, I can ask for towels and other laundry machines on-site, washing machines and dryers.
So there isn't traffic related to that?
No, so there's no, and I apologize, the, my clients speak, comfortable about that, so I'm going to present this to my board and verify that, but the laundry is done on-site, there is no vehicle delivery.
Rich, can I just ask clarification in terms of the parking spaces? Just go over for number of parking spaces currently for the, for the spa, and being proposed with development, in terms of parking spaces for the business?
Yep, so the. Out of order on my testimony, but I'll get to that, I'm going to go to our survey.
Could you remember to hold the microphone?
Which is sheet three, boundary topographic survey, it's identical to what we have before you, so we won't mark it in evidence, the, the survey shows there are spaces on the site, along with the spaces on the site exist, apparently there are the four, which includes one handicap and three, so there's a total of seven spaces today, and as a part of the application for site plan approval, they'll be providing four tandem spaces, so two rows of two, and when I get to the site plan sheet, I'll show how it functions, so we're going from seven spaces currently in site for the Days Spa use, seven spaces on-site, down to a total of four are proposed, and we have a parking expert will talk about how the parking on-site is, is, in the parking site, available permit parking and street parking, there's more than adequate parking on-site to, to handle this proposed applicant.
So I understand Mr. Malts is going to testify, with regard to the, so it's only four tandem spaces for the business?
Correct.
How many, if any, are patrons versus employees?
They're none patrons.
Thank you.
And that's kind of consistent with businesses in the downtown, you want them to use available surface parking, this is actually the end of town, it's called the shoulder district by our, one of our studies, about that when I do my planning proofs, so there is generally, there was a parking problem during the construction of the Hearth, when they had some of the parking was taken up, et cetera, since completion, there really has been no, I'll get into that in my testimony a little bit later as well, so proposing like, for any patrons of the is adequate parking with suitable times available in the area, as Mr. Malts will discuss, and that's consistent with good planning, you want people to come to your downtown, you want them to walk to other shops, travel into the downtown, use restaurants, et cetera, so we'll certainly get to that testimony, I want to do my planning testimony. With regard to the, the survey, traffic and circulation, Milburn Avenue, as you know, is one-way heading east with a turn lane to turn to Spring Street, bump out in the, in the sidewalk, gives way to an expanded pavement as it runs up Spring Street, now being one-way north-south, sort of to the north, off of, off of Milburn Avenue, the, the site has no vehicular access off of Milburn Avenue, but there is currently vehicular, and there will be proposed vehicular off of Spring Street. Spring Street being, it's interesting, back in the day, fifteen, maybe even more ago, when we did the variance for Bakti Yoga Barn, they were located on Spring Street, and it was dead park down, and workout facilities such as yoga was actually variance, and part of the rationale back then for having Bakti to, to get the use variance was that Spring Street was, was so little used, used by pedestrians and at the time vehicular traffic, so there is vehicular traffic that uses that, but there's really very little reason these days for, like, go back to the A one, you can see that the Hearth had pedestrian access for tenants at the northeast corner of the building, tenants will come out of that building, they'll come down Essex Street, and either cross over and continue up to the train, or they'll work their way down along Essex to some of the coffee shops, et cetera, the primary public entrance is at the south-westerly corner, where Milburn Avenue comes back together, there's cars coming, travel lane, that's where the primary entrance is, so people use that means, are going to come down along Milburn Avenue, there's very little pedestrian traffic that, as I said, there is vehicular traffic, but there's very little pedestrian nor there's anticipated to be much pedestrian traffic along, along Spring Street in the future. The site itself, as was shown on the, on the survey, is relatively flat. It's got subtle grades that surface runoff runs up to Spring Street, where it's picked up in town collection system with inlets right in front of our property, the, as was indicated, the site is fully, about ninety, I think I said this before, about, maybe I didn't, about ninety-five point four percent coverage now, so we are going to be reducing some of the coverage as a, as a function of this application. The site does contain that two-and-a-half-inch brick building, and what I'll do is I'll do my eight. Eight is a photo board, we're labeling a photo board number one, all photos were taken by myself today, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty, a nice sunny day in the morning. Number one is looking basically to the northwest, up on that intersection, showing the subject property next to the presidential barber shop, the, the facility Bakti Yoga, set back is the Kubik, and leads way to the, to a, which is where Douglas ties over now, looking almost straight on, photograph number two, you can see the Lanya Days Spa, that's the building that was built in approximately the mid twenties, it is, it is. It is, uh, it is an historic structure. It is on the historic registry or protected, but it's an historic structure. Structure with the possible, uh, exception of adding some dormers on the, on the roof, which we may or may not do. That structure is intended to remain identical, so we're not changing that historic building whatsoever. Um, the, uh, the alleyway on the left side, um, a entry and entrance into the, uh, four units of residential apartments that we're adding to the back, so there'll be entrance to that slight alleyway, landscaped, et cetera. If you come to photograph number three, you can see turns the corner. Um, since we are reworking the pavement for better parking space for the one car and better and better mobility, we have a very large tree that is both, uh, roots are encroaching into this, into the, uh, the curbing, right on the sidewalk, leaning towards the building. Uh, that tree, uh, actually is either a, uh, we're not sure. We took a look at it a number of times. It's either of the pear tree or it's a, it's a crab apple type tree. It does small fruit. They're not downtown trees because they do drop fruit once a year. It's kind of messy. Um, that tree will be removed as will the other tree, the trees, the building with landscape plan that is really designed to mimic, pick up the, the vernacular and vocabulary, the landscaping and patterning that was done as part of the Cleats Streets project that came down through this area. We'll be reading this corner with the landscape plan when I get to it. Photograph number five is now, we're now looking down, um, to the existing, uh, three-car garage that's going to be removed. There is an addition back of that twenties building that was done probably in the seventies. That will be moved and that will be infilled, the garage, and, uh, that frame addition on the back will be replaced with the building, which the architect will go into in a few minutes. Photograph number five is from the early child education center, looking at this parking lot will remain to the, to the dog grooming facility as well as possibly to the, uh, to the, uh, early education center. And then this, this line will be replacing the back of, back of, back of the building, moving the garage. There is a utility pole at the back corner, uh, does not provide, uh, for use. Uh, we are calling for that to be relocated. Um, we've, to, uh, the power company, uh, will not have to put in, uh, they may have to move the pole, but it will not, it will not be, um, an additional pole. There's a, there's a prohibition on poles in the town, uh, but you can relocate without the, the need for technical committee approval. Um, it's, we'll have to see how that service company need to, they can service these buildings since they provide to the build, to the buildings that front on Milburn Avenue. And then finally photograph number six is looking at, uh, you see the, uh, the end, end of the fifty-three unit hearth, there is a, a single loading dock, um, for fifty-three units on that building. Uh, there's the garage door in and out, uh, into the garage. And just off the photo right is the, uh, is the tenant, uh, access ingress and egress onto. That's the existing site as it is today. I have a color rating of the site plan, so this will be our A3. This is, uh, identical to the site plan you have before you, except added some color on the site to make it a little easier to see, uh, the different, um, buildings, et cetera. The, and it's still a little different, I apologize. The, um, the existing, um, sort of light color, that's the existing, um, ninety, mid nineteen twenties, uh, brick building that is remaining. We will be removing the frame section that was built later, back of it. The, uh, the design calls for two separate driveways entrances into two separate spaces. One, the first one is for the apartment, um, building use and under the, uh, under the building have a total of seven parking spaces, two of which, um, are electric vehicle charging. We actually, actually will also be adding vehicle, vehicle charging to the handicap spot, so we will ultimately have, uh, three spots for electric charging. That's, uh, that is, I'll talk about the zoning in a second. So we're providing seven parking spaces for the residential use. And we've got two tanks for a total of, uh, four parking spaces in the garage bay. Uh, that is the one far less, in fact, most likely initially used to be one or two spaces only, um, but it can hold as many as four. And that's again solely for the, um, the, of the, uh, management or workers at the day spa, though currently and in for the foreseeable future, they will walk to the site. The rework, the, uh, we are pushing back the, uh, the limit of the, to line up with the work that was done by us when we developed the hearth further up the street. So there's an align, also for a little more, um, a little more breathing room. Uh, there's one existing spot that will remain, uh, the first spot up, uh, Spring Street as you move to the north. And where there is currently striped no parking, we're going to have an enlarged area striped as no parking. Uh, it is our intent actually to approval from the township committee to have that designated as, uh, parking slash loading zone. Uh, I think you can talk about the loading.
Sorry to interrupt. I know you're going to go. Sorry to interrupt. I know you're going to go for parking. I'm a, I'm a little used about where the parking is now. If you could show me where you're proposing parking because I can see by your lovely garage doors, you're planning with something in here.
So currently, um, I think it's shown on, maybe best on the photos too. Um, there's kind of a, there's, there's kind of a, of, um, an open area runs from the back. I'm drawing on A2, uh, photo number four, from the back of that additional part, additional, the seventies addition that was put on the building, up past the garage, there is no curb definition. So there is a, a, uh, an open driveway that approximately... So we've got an open cut where there's no curb for approximately seven feet. So there's no definition of driveway, seventy-eight coming up between the, uh, the back of the building, and I'm drawing three now, so I guess, Mr., uh, since I made the mistake of drawing on it, we'll have to call this A4. Is that right, Rob?
Uh, correct, Mr. Cowan. What are we calling A4?
A4 is the boundary, boundary traffic survey. I've annotated the, uh, probably just under eighty feet of open curb that allows for access to the site, that being the handicap spot and the spaces, and then three spaces into the garage. So that's all that open area off of Spring and on the post. Now, come on to, there are two driveways. The first is, um, from current building. It's currently twenty-two feet up from the current building to the location of the first driveway entrance. At approximately forty feet, forty-four feet from center line to center line, there is a second garage door, uh, that exists in the area that I just circled. Those are the two doors. Door giving access to, uh, a total of seven parking spaces. And the door on the right giving access to a total of four tandem spaces. I will point, um, tandem spaces have been used more and more and more, uh, in development recently when the, their, uh, internal for, uh, residents or, or volume for, um, for, uh, business users. I would say there's probably, I don't know the exact number, but there's certainly tandem spaces where you're used hearth, used in almost all of the single, of the multifamily potential developments that we do, including those that have a retail component. It's not, um, seen perhaps by, by this board, but becoming quite common throughout the development state.
Uh, Rich, quick question. Uh, are you or is the architect a technicianist to ask about structural support foundations in the garage area, changing on required parking space, A side?
Um, probably, uh, you can talk to me about that because we've actually...
Can you understand what I'm, I'm concerned about?
Yeah. We, the columns have been designed to fit within the spaces, so reducing the size of the parking spaces as a result of those columns. They're fairly slender, there's not a whole lot of depth between, uh, from front to back, amount of, of width from side to side. So the columns that come down, one on our drawing, uh, four local, there are columns come down, but we've sized the, uh, parking space, eight foot and the nine foot spaces are spaced so, so the inside of those columns. So while it is, uh, tight, the spaces are, are sized per ordinance of nine by twenty-three and, and those columns sit in a gap designed to be in those nine-foot stripe spaces.
Rich, I'm sorry to be so... How many spaces will be?
Left side has seven, right side has four. Not, not, not my exhibit, but I think, um, we're, we're referring to, uh, one of the architect's renderings, um, just for the, Mr. Truitt, um, showing what some of the architects' color, color were submitted.
Just to follow that a little bit, Rich, the, the seven spaces that are reserved for the residential tenants and the two double spaces that they're divided, there, there's a difference between them, is it just bollards or a wall or something? I mean, you can't get from one space, three of spaces to the other, can you?
Actually, internally, you can walk between the two.
Right, but drive a car.
Can't drive a car. Yeah, they're isolated from driving. So on our, on our sheet five, which is, which is A3, the slightly darker shade is the part that is covered at the first floor, way out to the street. Uh, there is a section to the, to the left or to the west where that, or circulation areas that cover. Uh, that area in there, one of the, one of the planners, what would be, our intent was that was either going to be concrete levers, uh, since it is covered, uh, by circulation above, so that, uh, um, and then be actually can back into that area. Uh, there was a comment to probably add some bollards. We can add some bollards to protect the building next to us since that's part of the backup and the turnaround. So there's, we have laid turning templates. All of this works, both the back out, um, from the four spaces, so they don't compete with any of the, uh, the angle spaces across Spring, Spring Street. And we can actually get out without hitting the maneuver, get out onto Spring from any of the, uh, residential units, um, as well. So there's no, there's no contest. Uh, as was indicated, we think it's probably a good idea to put some on the end of our building so that there's no possibility of backing in, uh, to the building next door. That would be, uh, that would be certainly agreeable as any objection of approval this board, Mike Grant.
Did you say that you provide a turning template to the board?
I didn't. I have, uh, I have a turning, sole copy of a turning template that I went over with the police to provide that. Sure.
You go to, uh, page number five, talk about the parking there because it, it's, it's outlined on, I think it does a good layout of it, but it looks like, I can't quite tell which, which one of the spaces.
Okay, so as you, this is sheet five, which has been revised.
Okay.
And so, um, where you see the bold hatching, that's the, that's the one door into, um, the parking area. Right, turn right, these are, these are stripes only. There's a column at, at locations in, inside that are space, so someone can turn in, park in the first electric, um, charging station, the second electric charging station, there, there's third space and finally the fourth space, um, that they can turn in. All of those are sized to be, uh, nine by nineteen, which is our ten meter. Alternately, you can turn in, there's a van accessible space, so it's required to be eight and eight. It says feet, but if you have a, your first handicap always has to be, uh, accessible, which is eight foot, and eight overing. So that's the eight foot striping and eight foot. And just past that column, there are two more spaces. So we have a total of three spaces, including the large, on the left. And then we have a total of four spaces on the right on that door.
Okay.
And I would point out, um, within that, um, the refuse area is tucked between the building wall, within the building, refuse, uh, area, they will keep it in seventy-five ga, seventy-five gallon available containers that will be, uh, taken away by private recycling and refuse will fit into, into that area. There's also right behind that, a bike, um, that can fit between the refuse and the building. And then there's a smart lock system that UPS, Amazon, all the delivery companies have a code for it. Um, basically you get a, get a code for the box. They're all different sized containers. They open up, they put the box in, you get in, you get a text that your packages can be picked in, um, door number three, whatever the, the nomenclature is, and you get the code to pick them up. You pick that up at the end of the day. So all of the, uh, the deliveries, there's no dedicated package rooms, room handled in the Luxor One Smart System, uh, that's right inside. So theoretically, an Amazon or UPS would pull over in the no parking area, which we're putting that we can designate as a temporary loading zone, and they can go by, drop the packages and off they go. The, um, and as, and as I said, we're widening that, that first parking space, but we are not removing, uh, parking spaces along Spring Street. There is a staircase for circulation that's shown on this, so I referred to that between, uh, the barber shop and the building. That's where we have a series of bollards and I'll show you on the landscaping plan, we have a landscaped area coming in, into a space. That staircase provides access up into, uh, the, the, um, four units, be biased along the back circulation core. There's an existing one-story apartment on the first level, will be modified to allow that to be, uh, full height, so it'll still be a three-bedroom apartment, but it'll take, uh, the first floor as well as the next two, two floors can stand into, first one and a half, next one and a half floors. So all of the proposed units in the architect, this are designed to be three-bedroom, including the, uh, including the, uh, fourth unit.
Rich, I wanted to take you out of, uh, out of time there, but, um, just sticking with the parking, uh, do you have two ADA spaces? Are you required two ADA?
It's only one. It's a van accessible space, so it's eight and eight, we're showing it.
I'm just going to the topology report, there, paragraph...
We're only required to have one. If you're less than one spaces, you're required to have one.
Yep.
And Richard, clarification, in terms of the, the existing apartment on the floor, bedrooms
is currently in that apartment?
I refer to the architect since I've not been in that.
Yeah, you, you said three and I think that's, that's why I just wanted to...
Yeah, I think I, what I meant was the, the unit will re-demised, it'll be restructured to be a three-bedroom when it's completed.
Thank you.
On multifloors. So, uh, it actually is the most spacious, and it's the footage of all the units, um, just by nature of its in the building. So it is actually, uh, unlike many low and moderate, it's not the smallest, it's actually the largest unit. But they're all three, three-bedroom units proposed. One existing that's being re-demised to be, uh, three-bedroom, and then four new units, which are all three-bedrooms. And the architect over the layouts. There is a, and then finally, uh, at the very end, uh, external area that's covered by circulation, there's a second, there's a second, uh, that does allow for access area. The, uh, so there is, we believe, meets fire code through the, through the, uh, fire rated staircase, as the external. We, uh, obviously, as part of any approval, Mike Grant, this would have to get, uh, building permits, which, which would need to be fully approved by the fire department, uh, as well as the building officials. I go to our sheet. About the specific grading, I'm going to skip our sheet six and I'll go to our sheet seven. And this would be five.
Is this part of the site plan set? Is this part of the site plan set?
It's part of the site plan set, but.
Colorized. Okay, so we're up to, I'm sorry. So this is A five, and what is A five?
A five is a color version of the lighting and landscaping plan that is date 21, 2024, and revised DRC comments on 7/11/2024. Other than the color, it's the same sheet that you have before you. Basically, what this is intended to show is there is some on the left side, you'll see there's some bothered lighting, building mounted light, just to give a gentle glow into that path for safety and security. There is a gate at the front. The tenants will have access to that gate and get into the staircase to get circulation up. And then on the right side is our land scan. So we've got that area. We've got a series of different shrubs and annuals, ground covers, et cetera, to articulate that pedestrian access up into the apartments. And then on the right side, we have sought to mimic and the vernacular and the materials, the sort of work that was done in the bump outs. Both we were the engineers and landscape architects for that, as well as what's been on all of the other pop out corners. So there is the that's being removed, there are two trees that are being removed. One is a 12 inch, the other is is four inch. Four inch does not need to replace, but we are replacing. We're putting two new trees. This is a high branch tree that the limbs are high enough so the vans and car don't hit the branches and also different fear visibility doesn't encroach on the site triangle. Vehicles that are out of either of the two driveways. Green Val Zelkova is one of those that may or may not be native, and I know our forester is a push to native. So if we have to, we'll replace it something that would be a high branch tree that is maintained above the branches are above six feet. So there's no interaction, like no visibility issues, et cetera. And then there are also two smaller trees, the China. There are two locations for the China. One for the door and one up near the there's a door basement. We're kind of shielding in that landscaping. So and the rest is just ground covers and annuals and bushes and shrubs, et cetera. And again, of that, it's all designed with that same species used throughout the downtown. Some of that does because of proximity, because the recall buildings can go property line to property line or zero sap back in the in the zone. And since they've put the bump outs, we're taking advantage of articulate landscape into that bump out. So some of the landscaping does cross over the line into the township right away. It's done in a tasteful, doesn't interfere with any site triangle issues. We willing to to sign off that we would take full own of maintenance and that and enter into any agreements that township require. It's really consistent with what the people did, the the complete streets did when they helped a new landscape pattern. Cover the proposed engineering. Essentially, we are reducing the amount of coverage so we don't have to do any sort of management. The the project does need a number of variances. The first we need is a D five variance for the maximum residential density, 25 dwelling per acre are permitted. That would be based upon would allow 0.26 units. So that rounds down to four, but the difference between 4.6 and the proposed five is obviously only 0.74. So we're fairly close, and I'll talk about other densities in the downtown. So we're at 29.3 units per acre that proposed. And as I said, we're seeking relief to round to 0.7, 0.735 or 0.7. It's up to be five dwelling units. We also need seed savings really from loading. As a building with five dwelling units, one loading space is required, we're known as proposed. The some variance for that. Also need a variance for the minimum parking requirements. The five dwelling units require 8.5 parking spaces when accounting for each EV charging station credits. Seven are dedicated to residential. The spa requires 9.4 space where four are proposed. Eighteen spaces are required for this project, allowing efficiency of seven. I would point out a couple of things. Your space, the planner indicated we need a variance to provide outdoor amenity space for private or shared residential entities. They're not to be visible from adjacent residential uses or zones and shall not not be visible from public away or public property. I think if I grab my pen. If we look at the those those outdoor areas, there's first of all, some situation that's actually semi enclosed, so that's really not part of what we're talking about. But on the levels, there are some balconies, some of which are covered, and then some are open in. But basically, the staircase really prohibits you from seeing down from the between Milburn Avenue.
Rich, just to move things along, I think the architect should talk about this because the renderings will identify.
Okay, but I think what's important is because the renderings are do not include the existing buildings in front of. So when you're looking at the renderings, you need to understand that the existing building immediately to our west, as well as the stair tower, will block any visibility from the Milburn Avenue. Will not see those areas. And from the adjoining properties, you just there's they're basically property line to property line. There is a possibility that from some of the upper floors, the hearth, which is not contiguous to us, that they'll see back to those, but they're 100 feet. So I don't I don't think that we need a variance for that, but we can certainly argue that when I come to my planning testimony. The I would also about the planner noted that additional, the existing spa requires additional loading space as a retail service use where none is provided. We that's this is an existing nonconforming condition, does require variance relief. Any existing nonconformity is not exacerbated in our beliefs since actually area of the spa is being reduced, the square foot spa is going down. So the so we do need a variance for another loading space required. And even if we did, I think the small for both the residential use and the the existing real service use, I think the available parking out in front of the on Spring Street would be more than adequate.
The ordinance requires that the loading zone provided in the property.
Yep, yep.
So you mentioned that you're going to the township committee to maybe create a loading zone out in front, that's not going to qualify.
So if you think about, we have, we have a pullout area on Spring Street for deliveries of food and for Uber pickup. But you've got one loading dock on the photographs shown for five apartments, and even that is rarely used. It's used, obviously, as people move in, but it's not like it's used on a daily basis. And I think the same will occur with this. The time you're getting to have a space is upon move in, you've only got units. It's not expected to happen frequently. It can occur either in front of, they can block either one of the garage doors on the street. I don't know the height, depends on the size of the of the vehicle that's doing the whether vehicles can actually fit and turn into the into the garage, but not indicated that's part of the function. We would need a variance for providing no loading space property. We think only one is required, one is because the lack of one is is an existing nonconformity, and we're noticing we notice for variance relief for that, and we'll talk about that in terms of C two later.
Where where does the sticking with this currently, where does the loading for the day spa place?
It's not designated and didn't see outlined, could be outlined in the formal resolution. So the the reality, they don't get deliveries because Emily and her husband have all Emily has all the deliveries to the site, basically what she needs every two months or an occasional UPS truck every month. So now, you know, getting UPS or Amazon to go into a designated spot is like herding cats. They're kind of where they see an available spot. So whether they arrive in the morning, yoga hasn't filled all these spaces, park on Milburn Avenue, we're hoping that they'll turn the corner and that we. Number one spot, we talked about. The no parking as parking loading zone area, but it would not be on site.
I just want to instruct the board, whether or not they meet the proofs, do you think that given the nature of the application, a variance is required for the day spa for not having a loading area because basically you're reducing the area within which the activities are conducted, plus you're intensifying by adding four parts. So I think that either way you slice it, you're going to need a variance.
Then we'll certainly present that when I do the.
Yeah, thanks.
Question for you for you. While we're talking about variances, and I just wondering, the balconies that you're building, do they count as rooftop?
I'm going to talk about that in a moment.
Just before you talk to that, in the fire resolution, paragraph C, the board also granted a variance, the board requires loading zone space to be created in the same reason you granted the variance for the number of parking spaces.
That's correct. Even though they granted the variance, because they are reducing the area that's devoted to the day's use, even if they're reducing technically some square foot thing, if you look at the overall site, they still trigger the need for that variance.
Correct, I agree. Regarding, I will say, it was pointed out that our section that deals with truck vehicles and equipment does indicate that the handicap space need, there at least one handicap space needs to have electric vehicle charging available. So we will be adding additional charge of three charging stations. So we will not need a variance from 07.6D2, which was noted in the planner's report. With regard to. Sure.
Just in the topology report, the paragraph for them, they're saying that it requires 20 parking spaces. Did anybody address that?
Well, what I had said was it requires 18 when you need to account, you get to reduce your parking requirement both by ordinance as well as state statute when you provide EV charging capability. So it goes from 20 down to 18. In regard to rooftop amenity space, as is indicated in the topology report, the DRZ prohibits throughout the township, the placement of decks, platforms, terraces, or similar on a roof, family mixed use or non residential buildings for use as a space for building occupants and or guests. And they talk about what lines, and it's a little vague as to whether they meant the regulation considers roof to be the exterior covering of a building, which is the space between exterior walls. And much on top of those exterior walls or within those those exterior walls, a little vague. The it's important to go back to the town township Milburn ordinance 34-23 and the statement of purpose of that. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the township in Milburn's zoning code to include a prohibition of rooftop decks, forms, terraces, and similar features of a building for the use as a common amenity space. That's the intent. And and then the language follows. The amenity spaces are not common, they're not open, they're not open to. They're for each individual unit. So so certainly, the language is a little vague, but I think certainly when we look at the the statement of purpose of ordinance 2634-23, it's clear that that was referred in our mind was to refer to common amenity decks such as the ones originally proposed on the building at Woodland and Chatham, the Summit Medical Site. So this certainly is not that.
Just a couple of questions on that. Is there anything in the ordinance, whether it's the B four or otherwise, that's private balconies?
Outdoor residential, you're talking about 67G4A?
I'm good, but I'm not that good.
So that's where you talk about private or shared amenity space not being, but to my knowledge, there's no other discussion, and I don't require any other.
And what is it when it's not being visible, what does it actually say?
It said, and I can pull my. According to the topology, it says private or shared residential amenities spaces not be visible from adjacent residential uses. Shall not be visible from public rights away or public property. So there is no contiguous adjacent residential.
Right.
And so when it comes to public proper, we're thinking that means just in this case, only the streets or the surrounding parks. The parking lots, you can't see this because it's blocked by blocking. Then from the streets, the visibility is blocked by either the stair tower or other on the block. So to me, that doesn't doesn't apply.
Okay, well, let's keep going, we'll come back to that.
All right, so I think.
Oh, go ahead.
Is a tattoo on the planner?
No, I actually, I have it right in front of me. Yeah, I mean, it says, what I was looking for is actually the R, it says private or shared. So it's it's or the other. So, you know, is is a private balcony, a private, you know, residential amenity base for the proofs?
Well, the the up roof garden, that has no roof on it. So that is open, and I would say, while it's not on the tallest part of the building, it's not like a amenity deck per se, it is sitting up high and it does not cover. The one that is off the the second floor living space, that is covered. And so I don't know that that really would apply as. So, you know, if we have a if we have a covered porch on the back of a house, counts as building coverage. It counts as not accessory because it's attached to the building. There's no prohibition on on that as a space. So the front, if you have a porch that's covered by a roof, that's not an accessory structure. I think the the ones off the main living space, I think I'm pretty sure that would not foul of the terraces decks, it's their prohibition. And then the but the gardens on the top, I think, would be open to interpretation. I can't argue that the ordinance is defective, but live in a condo now with an open terrace, it's what makes an amazing unit. Brand new units that are going to outrend the hearth, South Orange, downtown South Orange, are going to do so because each one of them is a small terrace outside of their units. They're especially since COVID, outdoor amenities spaces are very valuable just for creating another layer for landscaping.
Okay, you're giving some excellent planning proofs. Let's get there when we get there.
I'm going to actually end my testimony. I'll answer any, I'll turn it to the architect, the traffic expert, the parking expert, that I can come back to some of those proofs.
There's also a bit with that.
There's what's that?
The the outdoor residential amenities, in addition to the section about the private or shared outdoor residential, it then states the above provisions shall not apply to private balconies and terraces on street facing facades.
But I'm not a street facing facade.
That, yeah. I mean, it's kind of.
Right, right.
Although you could certainly make the leap of if they're permitted facade, then it would be permitted internally as well in terms of the the cover, but.
Right, I'm saying let's.
Yes, let's hold off on that.
Let's see what other questions we have for the engineer, Rich.
Do we have any other questions from board members? Any questions for the public? Okay, I think you can call your next.
Yes, yes, I do. Chun Feng, C H E N G.
Mr. Feng, tell the board your qualifications in the field of architecture.
Uh, I, um, studied in South China, um, University of Technology. And I graduated from CCNY Architectural School. I got my license from nineteen eighty-seven. I have been licensed in New York, New Jersey since. And I testified in this board times. And also in Lindsay, Meru, New Jersey, several places I testified.
Your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, your qualifications have been accepted?
Thank you.
There was a question from the board attorney about the existing apartment, can you describe the existing apartment?
Yeah, and the spa takes the first floor currently, and they have an apartment on the rear of the, of the existing building. And, uh, the proposed, uh, portion is have, uh, three, uh, three apartment from first floor, second floor. And the third is attic, you know, so only the portion is higher. So the owners using it to study storage.
Now go over your plans.
Okay, uh, want to show, uh, this floor plan, the first floor floor plan elevation, but from the picture, you can see picture A.
So, Mr. Feng.
Yeah.
The plan we have there, the elevation plan.
Yes.
As well as the renderings, are this precisely what has already been supplied to board?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, we don't need to mark them separately, but we are going to ask for the record that as you identify different plan sheets or the renderings, that you identify them and what they represent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, picture A is taking from, um, the Melbourne Avenue, same building you can see. And, uh, the, but the post, uh, is in the rear. And, uh, the, the architectural of this existing building is a brick building, white brick. We intend to, um, match this in the new building. So we, we probably use, uh, the, the frame, uh, of the new building is a structural framing system and a lightweight construction, either metal or wood stud. And, uh, the outside is used of a thin brick. So the thin brick will look like exactly the same as the building. Then from this picture here. Picture B. You can see, uh, you know, there's a portion, portion of the building, we have other buildings to show you. So, this building is a flat, you can see, right? This building, because the, this street is angled. So we have some, uh, in and outs on, on this new building facade. So some shadows here, there. And also, the ground floor, uh, the floor, the garage, we intend to use the cal wall, you can see here. Cal wall has been used in all municipalities in New Jersey. And the advantage of this is, uh, go ahead.
Mr. Sir, do you want to mark the material?
Yeah, we can mark it.
Because if we're going to reference it and you want it marked, and you want it to be of consideration, we need to do so.
All right, so material A.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah.
So we're up to, um, A six. We're going to mark as A six.
Okay.
And what are we, what are we describing this as?
As a, as a sample of cal walls. Cal wall, cal, it's a.
Spell?
C L, C A L wall, cal wall. Uh, no, it's A L wall, yeah. And this material has been used, used the, all municipalities possibility in this New, New Jersey. And, uh, we, we, using this because we wanted to introduce natural to the garage. That's one thing, and the second thing is that this will give a sense of modern material. You know, so we don't want to make exactly a hundred percent, you know, so the facade, the color and the feature, the texture, but then we have some little bit more modern material to have a, a, a more, more in, in, in the look in this new building.
Can you just point their material?
The cal wall is here, you can see here, this is a cal, and this is a garage door. And on thi- on this facade, you can see, you can see, so, the cal wall here, and the wall here. And also in the back, this is cal wall.
And also, could you, is that the way, way that look, or is it other side?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we have, uh, this side is like a more, um, you know, like darker border and grates. And this is a lot, you know, so we haven't decided best to use, but either or, you know, same thing.
Okay.
So, so this is basically, it is not a loads, a, a loading material, it's just like a, um, so, like I said, you know, this were introduced to light to garage. So people using the garage would not have a feel of like a dark space. This is pretty light, you know, and, uh, present for people who stay inside.
So this is stationary, but not weight bearing, this is not structural?
It's not structural, yeah, 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 yeah. Right, 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 yeah, yeah, it's like in, in window, you know, you'll see, right. And here is the back of the building.
I saw one more question on that.
Sure.
Is that parking entrance to allow cars at, at a time, I mean, out or is it for one?
Yeah, it's for two cars. Uh, yeah, uh, I, I think one mention is, uh, this bay, bay, you know, this on floor plan you can see is wider. The reason for this is, uh, some dimension column, we wanted to have twenty-four feet driveway, you know, so then, you know, this unit, uh, uh, that. So you, the, the column is a, this is a column, uh, right, of twenty-four, twenty-four feet driveway. The, uh, the, the back of the building, also more cal wall here, 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 here. Here's the rooftop unit, uh, you mentioned. You can see, your unit is divided by a tall wall, so people can see each other from here, it's a totally private space. I, I hope that people really appreciate this kind of space, you know. I see the concern before, but this is not, the people see each other and they don't, they don't go to the other roof, you know, so it's a totally private.
Could you just point out, can you explain where that's facing out onto?
This is facing the, this is a lot, so here's Mil- Melbourne Avenue, here's the other street in the front. This is like facing the space in the rear.
So is that facing where the parking for the groomer is and the bakti is?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, exactly.
So it's looking to a parking lot?
In the rear, right.
In the rear?
Right, right.
Okay, okay, and can you also just explain again what, what the part is with that material, and then what, what's on?
Oh, yeah, here, here's, uh, where you can see the, the grates, and, uh, any, you see grates, cal wall. And then, uh, here, like a translucent material, like a, either plastic or something like that. So people can really see, uh, on, on to this space, and people can see through outside. But, but it's a, the light can go through, you know, but the image will, you can see outside or can see inside.
So the light can go through, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So it's opaque?
Yeah, it's opaque, yes. And, and, the, yeah, the, the stair tower, the engineer, engineer mentioned, this tower is, is outside of the building phase here. From, from Melbourne Avenue, you can see here, because stair tower block, block off the roof. Okay, so here you can see better, this was one. You can see the stair tower is, the, the stair tower is here, Melbourne Avenue is here. So every, all this is by the stair tower.
Sorry, confused about the, the, the design. Are you saying that each one is, is a separate apartment unit, right?
Yeah, this is a one, two, three, four, four units.
So the four, are you saying that the only windows, the full real windows are at the top level? And the, the lower levels are all material?
Uh, see, the, this, this level here is a corridor. And we have a staircase at this corner from the garage up. But, uh, there's only four units, we legally required only one exit. This one exit is provided from the stair tower. And this is for convenience, you know, the inside, the outer stairs. So here is the co- the, the garage, you can see it's open, right? And then people come up staircase or come up this staircase, use it for their apartments.
Okay.
And this one is the, the master suite, you know, sitting behind this. So they each have their own, own private box, sort of. And then up this is the rooftop, uh, deck.
Just staying with the bedroom level?
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's here, yeah, that's here.
So it doesn't have the glass on the top of it?
Yeah, it has glass, you know, it can be either way, you know, so it can be glass, be a, or, you know, just solid roof, yeah. Yeah, we, we, currently we, we show, uh, glass, yeah, currently we show as glass, the glass roof, yeah.
Is each unit two balconies, one at the top level and one at the bottom level?
Yeah, thi- thi- yeah, this is like a balcony, uh, connecting with the seating area of a master bedroom floor. And this one is for the entire family. They come to the attic, attic, and through the staircase, then they come out this door, that's their family balcony.
So on this, on the, on this level?
Yeah.
Is that also a semi enclosed?
Yes, yes, only one open, and the rest is all fully enclosed, it's a, people can.
Mm-hmm, so two balconies per two.
Per unit, yes.
It's a two story unit.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On the master's level?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, between the material, what I'm going to call the material that marked as A six, the, the cal wall material.
Sure.
There a window?
There are no windows, it's just an opening. No, no, you know, currently proposed this way.
No window?
Right.
And when I put my arm through that opening?
Mm-hmm.
Where am I?
This, this is just like a balcony, but it's a semi closed balcony. So people can see through this.
Can I, can I sit in that, can I sit in that area?
Yeah, you can sit there, yeah, it's a small balcony, you know, the rain come down and it will drain out. But the sun can go in from here. It's basically is a, basically it's closed, but there's a one opening in the middle.
So that's not actually, that's not, that's not part of the living space, that's kind of outside space.
Yes, outside.
Behind that space is where your apartment, where you actually live.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Hi, so there are windows on the Spring Street side, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a normal window.
So I don't know, I, I don't answer the question when someone's asking about windows.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's a window, yeah.
Windows in, on the Spring Street.
This is a normal window, uh.
And these are glass?
This is glass.
Not cloudy glass?
No, no, that's a normal glass window.
Thank you.
You're okay.
So at the top level, you open patio, um, that's not covered, so.
Top here is no cover.
Right, so what, what, could you explain about the drainage in case of snow accumulating there? How that?
This is very commonly, you know, when people like edge water, I feel, you know, people really appreciate this space. So we use, normally we have fiberglass to, to waterproof the, the dirt, and then we have a drain, you know, either one or two. So basically this is like a roof garden. Here because of the, the concern, so we try to have like a wall to separate them, opaque glass, so they can enjoy themselves. They can be seen from, uh, people.
So, question was, how does the snow go away? I mean, is that, is that melt, I mean, melting, I mean, how?
Yeah, you know, they, they either, they can, can build some like a snow melting, uh, he- heating wire, right? So, a lot of people doing this, you know, in, in your driveway, your front porch, bury some, like a tube inside. And then the snow will be melted, yeah.
Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, that we were proposing this way, yes.
So when you say, what kind of?
It's, it's like a potty tube, you know, just like re- re- floor, yeah, same thing, you know.
And you will provide that, or it's up to the, each?
No, no, we, we build, we build.
A heated floor?
Yeah, yeah, heated floor, you know, and the snow will be melted.
Is that in our plans anywhere, the heated floor on this?
Oh, because, because the next time is, this next stage, uh, technical issue. But we, we tell the board we will, we'll do this way. Okay, yeah, we, we built the melting system.
And then, if I could ask one more question, the part on the first level, right, bottom level, what's on second level?
So, from the staircase here and the staircase here, can call for people ingress, egress, yeah.
Thank you. And that in that second, the corridor, it's, is it the same thing with the open?
Yeah, yeah.
Balcony for all of those things that we're seeing? So basically?
They line up, they line up like this.
People would be kind of exposed to the outside every time they're going into one of those four sections?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't want the people, you know, living here, just, just like living in, tell, you know, they, they, dark corridor into their apartments. We want them just like more light, this facing south, so that, that's what I, our idea, yeah, yeah. Yeah, of course, you, you have a light, yeah, yeah, sure. Oh, no, because this is like plan, like, like planning board, we, we next time, next stage, working drawing, working drawing will have all the snow melting, all the lighting plans, you know, next sta- stage is that, yeah. We don't know whether we'll get approved, so if we spend a lot of money doing engineering, and the owner will spend a lot of money, yeah, will be next stage.
So, so on, um, you're going to have the, the second level, it's an corridor, but there is an open window that's open to the outside. So those lights could potentially bleed out all night long onto the people that are, anyone who's, I mean, it would be like.
Yeah, it's, it's just a one, or, you know, yeah, but the opening is really the concern, uh, you know, we haven't told him.
No, just actually a question, would, that is, and then light's going to be on all night because it's a corridor, correct?
You can see, yeah, because it's just, you know, because it's a translucent.
Okay.
There's only one opening, yeah.
Okay, well, I, well, we'll discuss lighting, I think, probably. Okay, well, I, we'll, we'll discuss lighting, I think, probably.
I have a question, in the garage, are there bollards to keep cars from?
Mentioned we will have a lot of bollards here and there, so the cars won't, you know, accidentally going outside, yeah.
What kind of, um, like, security do you have, are you planning for, because you have all these?
Engineer has mentioned we have this, uh, door system, like, or, system. So only people with the car, or delivery people with the car, or with the number can get through the garage door. You can't.
And if they're walking, like, they went to, for some reason, how do they get back in? And what is the security to buy a pedestrian?
The, the staircase is, is a, you know, is a, so people normally will go through the staircase, walk to Milburn Avenue.
If you want to get back in though, if you were a person who lived in one of these and went to town to go shopping and you wanted to come back in?
They have a key card, you know?
A key card, okay. And will their security officers or?
They have intercom system, you know, their, their relative or their friends, you know, just make apartment, you, you, intercom to communicate.
Would, would an administrator, somebody, um, who they can call if there's a security concern at night?
We haven't talked about that. Need for that?
Just as far as what I had indicated in my testimony is that there will be, um, there'll be a, a gate, um, long, slightly recessed. So that when people are coming back, they will go through, access to the gate, and they will go down and get access into the, into the building, each unit. So in the garage, they'd be using, um, that alleyway, which is landscape with bollards lighting, low-level lighting, um, through a gate. And that's where the security system would be, if you're getting buzzed in, that's where you get buzzed in and go up the, but, so that was, that was in my testimony, so I just thought I would interject.
Can I? Sticking balconies. So it looks like, um, the, the multifamily, the fourth housing zone to the west. You're familiar with that?
Yes.
Fifty-three units?
Yes.
Right? How many store? Do you know?
Uh, yeah, can you provide fifty-three?
Uh, it's real, it's actually shown in the text plans, is to, there's some, there is some lofted space that's up into the attic. It's really showing in the, the architect's plans.
About the, the newly approved, the hearth, was it hearth? Yes, fifty-three units. So my, my question is, from, how many stories is the hearth building?
I believe that, I will check.
Do we know?
I believe it's three stories on Milburn Avenue and it's two stories on Essex.
Okay, the, the, the reason, the reason why I'm asking is that property or that development is a residential development. And I, in, at the ordinance, I'm confident that you, that this, these balconies do not face a street, but at the same time may be visible from some residential units at the hearth.
But it says adjacent, so that's, that building is not adjacent to residential use.
What it says should not be visi, visible, um, adjacent residential uses or zones. I think it's up to the board to interpret whether the, it's, it's an adjacent zone, certainly, not, not directly next, next to. But it's adjacent zone and that's asking whether any of those units can see these balconies, either, either floor balcony.
My suspicion would be yes.
Okay, so just in fairness to the app, that's the case, which I believe it is. Then I do believe in looking at the ordinance, both A and B, first of all, A, certainly applies to, um, balconies. And B, also, because it's adjacent residential zone, portable, portable house zone, there it is visible that you would, you would need relief to the extent it's visible. If it's invisible and you had proofs to demonstrate it wasn't visible, that may be story.
Well, given that the three stories are looking out this direction, and you're looking at two and a half stories that, that, that has a three-story appearance with a, with a fourth stor, like a half-story balcony up. So clearly, I think from these upper levels, you would be seen from the most easterly facing units at the hearth. Now, it gets into that adjacent, is it mean contiguous, I mean, when does the waste and stop? Going to the B3 district, it's some, you know?
It's, it's just a question whether they're visible or not.
Yeah, but it also depends on how you define adjacent, adjacency. Is it, how many, how many, how many?
Is it within two hundred feet?
Uh, yes. I mean, I, I live at the top, I balcony from seven miles away. It's not a restricted zone. Exactly, I was just at a, at a party, seven miles away. So look, as far as, we'd be happy to take that under consideration and look at that issue, clearly.
I just want to make sure that the application is comprehensive all around, that's all.
So, uh, planning board notes about rooftop deck, rooftop garden, um, concerned, um, number five.
Regina, what are you referring to?
The planning board report that goes with our, it's in our packet.
No, you're not, not the planning board report, you're talking about the topology rep?
Sorry, topology.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, it was under the, it was under the link.
Question our jurisdiction if all was sudden it was.
Under the link as the planning report, number one.
Got it, go ahead.
That is, right, I didn't get the proper suffix. So, um, that, or topology goes into some, let's see if I can find the paper, sorry, actually, I like. I might have passed it already. Um, about the rooftop garden, which is a couple of things in a different areas and how, sorry. I think I might have taken a screenshot, let me just look at that. Okay. Okay, it talks about something that concerned them, page five, I think, of fourteen? The provision of rooftop amenity space, DRZ 609.1, prohibited township, the placement of decks, platforms, tariffs, blow-off. You can read along, but this question, applicant says a roof garden on the fourth floor slash attic and a semi-enclosed balcony on the third, third floor of each of the new dwellings. While the balconies are covered by glass roofs, and I'm not sure if that's how you spell roof, but whatever, I'm going to let that go. It is otherwise not covered by the floor above. And it into the roof gardens, the board should consider the extent to which the balcony meet the roof definition and are subject to this prohibition. That, that is what clues into perhaps this wasn't a complete application. Maybe.
I, I don't, I don't think it goes to. Think the application's deemed complete and they're certainly permitted to present for the board. The question is, and the reason, reason spending the time looking at this, is to determine whether relief is needed. Now, sometimes, what, as you may recall, I made the board, look, let's let the applicant face, get, get to the planning and then we can revisit it because by having the benefit of some additional information may help you in your interpretation role. But, but I think Regina makes a good point. The roof garden that, have you reviewed the apology report, the planning report for this application?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah, you gotta say yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so in part, it noted, there's a comment about proposing a roof garden on the fourth floor attic. Can you show the board what you believe to be that, that garden area?
This picture shows, here the garage floor, that's the corridor, that's the semi-closed balcony and the roof garden.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know, you know, my thinking is concerned about the common, commonly sheer rooftop because, you know, children play and push people around, it's, it's a same issue, you know? But here, like, the engineer, it's a private, completely private, it's just one family.
I, I understand, but I think just also to answer Mr. Wood's question comprehensively, there are two sections here, okay? So section six nine point thirteen talks about putting decks, platforms, or similar features on the roof of a building for, for use as an amenity space. While six oh six talks about amenity space, residential amenities being visible from, from residential zones or uses. So there's two, there's distinct there. So I don't know if we necessarily need to get caught up on about, in my opinion, whether and what's roof, et cetera. I think they, they probably need, we can hear them.
I just want to point out one thing, you know, uh, code requirement is a thirty-six inch rail. And so we propose forty-two inch high or even forty-eight is fine, you know? So basically, people sitting there, people can see. The only one ending up and, uh, uh, walk to the edge with it. Yeah, so we, we, we will have concern, we will feel the concern to eliminate or minimize that.
And also, just, both six oh six and six nine, they're not only talking about the roof, they're also talking about the level below it. The semi-enclosed space, so it's really both of those bases that they're talking about.
We have alternative, an alternative is all these balconies who can put a window. If people really care about this opening, yeah, we'll be happy, put a, put a window. So it become enclosed, the light come in, you know, and then, you know, no concern of the opening, the light coming out from, from the door. We'll be very happy to do that, the window.
Okay, well, we'll have Keller, in his role as a planner, address all this, and he's, he's being given great heads up, so. That was you, yes, go ahead.
Any other questions?
Any?
I, I think, I think that the architect, for the benefit of the board and the public, should go over the elevations and the floor plan. Because I haven't done that yet. Of your site plan sheets, your architectural sheets. Can you just walk through for the board what these three bedrooms are going to look like in terms of the floor plans?
Sure, sure.
And also show the elevations so the board understand what the total height and number of stories are for the buildings and, or thing, and how it relates to the height and number of stories of surrounding buildings.
Okay, sure. Here's the existing building here, yeah, this whole building, uh, this is within the height limit. You know, our, the provided is a five feet, ten inch. Uh, the, the first floor here, floor here is a garage floor. The second floor floor is a, a two-bedroom in the front, family room in the back, and bathroom in the middle. And then is the master suite, the bedrooms front, and the, the sitting room in the back and the room in the, in the middle. Uh, and, and the kitchen is on, on this floor. And then garage, you can see here, that's the second staircase for convenience. This is the main staircase here, this is the building here. Uh, we provided a handicap ramp with five feet radius entry point. Then you come in, this, uh, like, the living room, kitchen, and one bedroom here. Here's the garage and the engineer mentioned already. The spot occupies this portion. And then the second. Yeah, the second floor goes this way, two bedrooms, like, for, for the unit. All the units are identical, two bedrooms here, a bathroom here, a washer and dryer here, staircase, kitchen here, and the living space. And the connecting corridor is here, one side connecting to the stair tower, the other side is a connected convenience case. And then the existing building, the, uh, this way, you know, up. So the circular staircase connecting both floors. And the unit below comes up, and there's a, a family room here, two bedrooms here, and bathrooms in the middle. And connecting corridor, which is mentioned, if the board feels that they prefer, you know, we can have windows in the opening. And here we try to have doors for the, the existing building, trying to make it more interesting. But I should know, you know, if the board doesn't like, we don't have to do this way. And here's the rear building, we line up all, all these openings. So here's a sliding corridor, here's a garage, here's the, the enclosed, semi-enclosed balcony, here's the roof. The third floor, for example, this one also, in the master, masters, is here, masters, uh, bathroom and the walk-in class is here. The stairs, and the sitting room, and the semi-enclosed balcony, and identical. And then come to the existing building, here's the attic space, only the lower portion is high enough to stand up. And that's where we want to have some dormers. And, uh, the standard elevation is high. Here's some details, how to do the sliding wall to have a sound quite here, man, you know?
Just staying with the sheet, the existing building third floor?
Yes.
Does it have a bathroom?
Oh, yeah, bathroom, there is an existing bathroom there.
Existing bathroom, is there a shower in the bathroom?
Um, small shower, yeah, small. Currently, the, the owner uses a study.
And why?
Study and storage room, yeah, there's a shower there, yes, small shower, yeah.
Not proposing that as living space, correct?
No, 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 we, I, I asked her, she said that's for, they're, they're used as a study, storage room.
So what's the total square footage being added, added of four units in total?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't calculate, but if you don't include only the, the other two floors? Uh, take a guess, it's about less than two thousand square feet.
Is that four units?
That unit, four, four unit, the attic. Attic, like, you don't know how to measure because only the second is high, the lower portion goes down pretty much.
So each unit is five hundred square feet, that what?
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the, the existing unit here. The, the other building, uh, I did have a relation before. Yeah, it's about one thousand square feet per floor. And, you know, the middle one is bigger because of the, the driveway below. So for, for each unit, uh, two thousand, thousand square or more, and this one is a five square. So for for each unit, two thousand, thousand square or more, and this one is five square.
So roughly about eight and a half thousand square feet is being added with the units?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, yes.
For both levels combined, okay?
Yes.
Can you tell me, you said something in one of these papers, that there's a wheelchair lift somewhere?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the wheelchair lift is for the for the store in the front. The engineer proposed a wheelchair lift because the current ground is high, there's few steps, you know, like four, five steps, so they proposed a lift here.
A lift to access that, the front structure?
Yeah, yeah, the unit, because it's only four units, required to have an elevator.
Okay, so none of four new units will be accessible to someone who's in a wheelchair?
Only for, the one, you know, this, this one, the existing building, that one has a hand ramp, has five foot radius, that's a hand accessible.
The unit that's in the front?
Yes.
And that'll be open public, or is that for the owner?
The unit in the existing building, that's a handicap accessible. But the other four, because only four units, not required to have a handicap accessible.
Okay, and the park, is that for a resident, or is that for, I guess it's, or is that?
For, for, yes, in the resident parking area, yes.
And so the, so I'm confused about if you handicaps parking space.
Yeah, it's like this, it's like, you know, they require so many parties where you have handicap, because handicap can be for visitor, or resident, or can be for the unit in here. We do have the ramp, you know, that's a code requirement, but if you look into the code requirement of units, they say, you know, if you have only this much units, you're not required to have an elevator.
So there's no elevator access to the second floor?
No, it's not.
And for the, if it's in the front, can they get to the second floor? Could a wheelchair get to the second floor?
Yeah, but because they have a bedroom on the first floor, when you have all fully like kitchen, bathroom, bedroom on first floor, the other floors don't have to have elevator, you know, basically, handicapper can leave on that floor.
Okay, but if you were, if you were there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't choose that complex if you were in a wheelchair, because it's not accessible, none of it is really accessible to the second floor.
Right, 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 yeah, so living, yeah, because it's not required, we, because to put an elevator is very expensive, you need a lot of space, you know, so we into the code, the code is not required, so we didn't, didn't put it, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
How does the elevation of the buildings, the old building and the new apartments, does that compare to, well, how do they compare to each other, first of all, and then how do they compare to the building next door?
This one showed, oh, sorry, so this one showed, this existing building in the front, this is the proposed building, like I mentioned, you know, we want to match in color and the texture.
Sure.
So we use a thin brick to match the old building, and then we use a cow wall to introduce modern element, you know, like a feeling.
Understood, so what's in the height, the elevation?
The height elevation, you can see from from this here, that's the existing building here, that's the new building, it's slightly a few feet higher than.
A few feet higher, okay. And how does, how does the elevation of the new buildings compare to the next door?
Next door, I think is a very low building, you know, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't really get into it, into it, I just look at this front portion. The, the building is pretty low, you know, it's a, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Oh, the, the thin brick is just they use a full brick, they cut the, you know, yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, you need, we provide you, but we, I didn't bring, but basically, we will choose a color and texture similar to the existing building. So whatever existing building, the color is, texture, we find a thin brick to match it. Okay. Yeah, we have get a standard, I didn't have today. Oh, like I mentioned, I, I told the cow wall guy, he said in town, you have a elementary school used this, and he said every town in New Jersey has a cow wall building, yeah. Oh, yeah, I, I can bring, he told me, but I didn't copy it down, you can ask him, yeah. No, 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 this is very, very strong, and graffiti resistant, and he mentioned all the advantages, is you know, you can't damage it, it's very strong material. Yeah, I will, yeah, I can, I can show you, yeah.
So I'm not sure if you had your question fully? You did?
I think so.
Okay, all right. Look like almost forty feet tall, right? I'm looking at the plans correctly, thank you.
Yeah.
Almost forty feet tall, are the other buildings in the area that tall?
The other requirement is the height limit is forty, you know, you take it under forty.
So you're two inches under, okay.
Have an, oh, maybe twenty.
And the hearth, hearth, how tall is the hearth?
What?
The hearth, the apartment building that's on the other side of the block.
The engineer mean.
I can check, I believe the corner elevation is just under forty feet, a couple inches.
Yeah, I mean, I, my question really was, I think the building next to it, it may shadow, that's what I was more focused on than the hearth, but, okay.
I would just, I would also point, point, there's been some aggregation of those other properties have been purchased by a common owner. So at some point, expect that those are going to be redeveloped, and likely, they'll come in with something that's conform, most likely about that forty foot level. So those small, we thought it was more for nineteen twenties, building on the corner, less and for clear, recognizing that the building around it, actually, the rest of the infill on the block is going to be redeveloped at something closer to forty feet.
Any other questions from the board, or?
I have a question. Did you, I'm looking at the board's report, but I'm also looking at the zoning order, do you take a look at affordable housing requirements for the four zone? Did you take a look at that? If you, if you didn't, it's okay, I just want to know the answer.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
You didn't, so you didn't investigate that, okay.
No, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just a, just a quick follow-up. Intent and the intent here and the requirement is that one of these be affordable, right? Plan is the one in the existing building?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I asked about the floor plan.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay.
I do. It's Harold K. Maltz, M.A.A.T.Z.
Mr. Maltz, skip the board's academic and professional experiences as a traffic engineer.
Yes, I'm a principal of the firm of Haml Associates Incorporated, that's spelled H.L. L., located in West Orange, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey by test for the last fifty-one years. My license is good standing, hold a Master of Science in Civil Engineering, a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from the New York College of Engineering, also Master of Science in Environmental Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been a full-time transportation consultant specializing in both traffic and highway engineering for the past fifty-six years. I've also served as an adjunct on the faculty of the New Jersey Institute of Technology, for whom I currently teach a course on highway engineering to employees in New Jersey Department of Transportation. I've appeared more than a thousand times in front of boards, in fact, many, many times over the years in front of this board, as well as the Millburn Planning Board, and I've also worked for the township of Milburn as a consultant, most recently regarding geometric aspects of the improvements that were incorporated on along Milburn Avenue and Main Street. And prior to that, also for the planning board, their traffic consultant reviewing the resident hotel improvements adjacent to Shaw Hall, and other projects before that. Most of my work is currently representing municipal boards.
Sure.
Mr. Maltz, since a long time you did work for township of Milburn Planning Board or Board of Adjustment?
Not for the Board of Adjustment, but it was for the township, and I don't remember, it's been several years, it was related to that improvement, as I said next to your more. Think back to a year or two before the construction, that would give you an idea.
So that was, that was quite ago.
Yeah, several years.
Thank you.
And with being retained as a consultant on geometric improvements along an aspect of Main Street several years ago, when that was done.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, your qualification has been accepted.
Yeah. I also.
Can you hear me? Okay. Well, just like to say, I was retained to perform a parking occupancy surveys of the municipal public parking, both permit and metered non-permit parking within reasonable distance of the site, and identify the adequacy of the parking areas surveyed to accommodate the site's site being variance. The report was dated, that I said, dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I'd just like to say that I'm going to present findings to that report even though the date is almost two years old, for whatever reason, the project took a long time to get before the board, but I have done a supplement update, which I will add as part of testimony. That supplement is only two and a half months old. As identified by Mr. Keller, project exists of a beauty spa which is not being changed. There was one residential apartment that's going to be reconfigured, four apartments that are going to be added, they're going to be all five will be bedroom apartments. The parking order requires a total of twenty spaces. Spaces required for the retail or virtual park, and by RSIS, ten spaces residential, with the deletion credit of two spaces for the EV, according to state guidelines, eighteen spaces are required for the project. Eleven spaces being provided, consequently, seven spaces are required by variance. Seven spaces are being identified in one part of the five residential units. With two credit, EV credits to the spaces that you need, that means we need eight for the residential, seven are being provided, therefore, out of the variance, one space is associated with the residential part. Four spaces, those are the tandem space, are being identified for the retail or portion, consequently, six spaces are needed for variance on that particular part. Six plus one is seven, once again, there's the variance of seven. I, okay, the parking exhibit is on display, the parking area that was identified near the site, that I considered to be the reasonable walking distance, and I would like to note something to the board, this, I did all the parking surveys out here myself, I think I take a nineteen mile between the two days I was out there. This is not my first rodeo in doing parking surveys of the Milburn downtown. I also did more survey, but of greater, covering a greater area for S two eighty-one LLC before, which was before the planning board. This is the site at three seventy-eight eighty Millburn Avenue, it's about three hundred feet to the east of the site, the side of the street approximately opposite the municipal drive. I also did the Children's Aquatic Center parking survey, which encompassed the area, this went back, that's on Taylor Street, two thousand sixteen seventeen. The street has a different name, it was Soul Flywheel Sports, the exercise center, that goes back to two thousand eleven, and I did other work in the, in the downtown. So this is the final, I've done surveys in the area, but more importantly, I had able to make comparison with what I did for the project at three seventy-eight thirty eighty Millburn Avenue, which was a couple years before this one. The parking areas that identified within reasonable walking distance, including both sides from Taylor Street to Essex Street, Mill Avenue, both sides from the street to the vicinity of the municipal drive by Dunkin' Donuts. Just want to go forward and point out on the board, looking to the east, here's municipal lot number five, this is the Dunkin' Donuts on the east end. So I went from there, broke it into six sections, north side of the streets, south side of the street. The first length went from Dunkin' Donuts area to Town Hall Plaza. The second section went then to the street, and the last section was broken out from Spring Street to Douglas. So even though I identified one length, I actually broke it into six segments to easily identify the intensity. Municipal lot number six, which is located west side of the municipal building, front of Millburn Avenue, and I would note that what's important about is a key location for the site, it has business permit and twenty-four hour permit parking only. So resident could get a permit there, you have twenty-four hour access. Where is that? Municipal lot number six, that's right here, it's known, I exhibit in my report, it's Exhibit A as Area A, it's on the west side of Town Hall Plaza, the municipal building, it looks directly across to the municipal building, it's right here, and site is there at Spring Street.
When you say twenty-four hour parking, never for residential?
Yes, probably business and residential, I checked, that is specifically allowed for.
And Mr. Maltz, what's the, since we're talking about it, from municipal lot number six, referred to as Area A, in this property?
That's probably about, I'd say about two hundred fifty feet.
Yeah.
Do you, do you start to interpret, do you know if any of that, that parking availability, those parking spaces change with the new, you know, for Town Hall and the renovations and they're doing, expansion?
I, I don't know what they're proposing there, I can't say.
The long, Town Hall Plaza, they draw included both sides, this extends, it's on west side of the municipal building, and extends between Essex and Millburn Avenue, and then lastly, it was municipal lot nineteen, which, I'll just point that out, that's the big lot, borders Essex and Spring Street on the southeast to the southeast, that's known in my report as Area A, and lot is permit parking only from nine a to six p.m., there's no parking from two a to five thirty a.m. So what's important in this lot is, if resident wanted to get a permit, twenty-four hour parking, this would be no good for them. This would only be good for, if, for example, if somebody worked in a store and needed a permit for their daytime early. a permit for their daytime or evening parking, that would serve that.
Is lot nineteen limited just for commercial use?
No, I think it's used quite a bit by municipal employees. The fact that that's what I typically observed all the time I've been, you see police cars in, municipal vehicles in there, they store electronic signs in there. When I, and in fact, I'd be very candid, whenever I saw those in those parking spaces, I counted that as a car. So it's occupied, so.
Quick question. I don't. Sorry, I don't know if you know that during the summertime, some places are closed for entertainment all summer long. I don't, is it, I don't know if that's the, that's a draw. That's one way, I know you said it's got a two-hour limit, but.
I know, well, the street can be closed.
No longer, they move.
Okay, well, in the, through Milburn, I often found Main Street and I have to make a turn on Essex. So, any event, this is, this is the, whatever happens, when you hear the results of my survey, it's going to be immaterial. The parking area limits I identified in Exhibit One, and the, as in Table One, the area is separately counted. For Monday, the total permit and metered parking equaled one hundred and sixty-eight spaces. I also, on Saturday, the available parking is a hundred and seventy-one spaces in total within the area that I surveyed. Okay, what's important is municipal lots six and nineteen, which are the permit lots, have a hundred and nine spaces for permit only. In particular, lot number six, which is the ones to Town Plaza Drive, lot I previously said allows twenty-four hour permit parking. That's what's important for that particular lot, has twenty-nine spaces. And once again, lot nineteen has eighty space, that lot is not a twenty-four hour permit lot.
Okay, let's just be clear about something. When you say municipal lot six has twenty-nine spaces?
Correct.
Are you talking about twenty-nine total spaces?
Total spaces.
Okay. So you haven't yet talked about your study, how many may be available?
No, no, I'm going to come to that. That's the survey. Okay. Okay, the surveys I performed, and I, once again, I'd like to point out, I did all the surveys myself. I had no technician go out. Everything I'm identifying, I counted and so myself. And I did all the work on the tabulations and tables. There was nobody else that was involved in this in any way.
I have to say parenthetically, that is rather than rare. So, good for Mr. Maltsman.
I've always done that my whole professional career. The surveys were performed thirty-minute interval, and the by the occupied spaces within the eleven areas that I segmented out and I previously discussed. The surveys were done on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, which was a Wednesday, from eight a.m. to one p.m., and then from three p.m. to six p.m. And on June third, two thousand and twenty-three, which is a segment from nine a.m. to one p.m., and three p.m. to six p.m. And the tables in my report identify the variance. Terms of results, I'm going to try and, there's a lot of numbers, I'm going to try and keep it brief, so I don't pull it out of chairs rolling onto the table. On the Wednesday survey, once again, the total available metered and permit parking, it was a hundred and sixty-eight spaces available. The, for entire occupied spaces, the peak occurred at eleven a.m., there were a hundred and thirteen spaces occupied. Five thirty, the lowest occupancy occurred with forty-nine spaces. That's out of the hundreds that are available. Conversely, then, convert that into vacant spaces, because we want to know how many are available to satisfy our variance. Highest vacancy was a hundred and nineteen spaces total vacant at five thirty p.m. At eight a.m. and six p.m., it was a hundred and thirteen. And in the total area, the nine thirty, twelve o'clock range, had the lowest vacancies ranging between fifty-eight to sixty-eight spaces.
Is that a.m.? Nine thirty?
Nine thirty a.m. to twelve noon. That covered that range, fifty-eight to sixty-eight, should be fifty-five to sixty-eight vacant in total. We're only talking about a variance for seven spaces. So this far exceeds what we're talking about. In terms of, then what's important is, for the vacant permit only, number six, which I've noted is the twenty-four hour permit lot, it ranged between fourteen to twenty space vacant throughout the entire time period that I surveyed. So once again, the vehicle would want to use this particular lot, be the vehicle associated with the residential part of the variance. That would be the person who needs a twenty-four hour parking permit. So we have fifteen to twenty spaces observed being vacant. We only have to satisfy for this particular part of the site, one.
Okay. This is, it's a residential project, residential deficiency in terms of parking. Survey overnight for municipal lot number six?
Yes, and I'm going to come to that on what my supplemental report is, I went out late evening. And I'm going to have a hand up.
Excellent.
I anticipated that question.
Love it.
In fact, who would have gotten this? I did the surveys, those surveys in late February, early March. We were originally scheduled in March, unfortunately, the site engineer became, was ill, and this was two months later now. You would have had it two weeks after I did it. Okay. I pointed out that six I indicated with the residential part of the variance, fourteen to twenty spaces available throughout that range of study. We only need to satisfy one for the residential. That leaves the six for the commercial aspect, in this case, the spa. That would be satisfied, be metered parking, which is your on-street parking. And metered parking, the range was thirty-six to fifty-five vacant spaces in metered parking with my study area. We only need to satisfy six as part of that, part of the variance. So this is an indication, right away on the weekday, with more than adequate metered and permit parking to accommodate the seven cars. Seven spaces broken down as one for residential and six for commercial. Same thing for Saturday, and I think I'll be able to get this a little quicker. There were a hundred and seventy-one spaces available on Saturday. There were three more. What happens is, Spring Street, as you go down to the tail on the west side, there are three parking spaces there, which are not permitted to be used on weekdays, which are available on weekends. If you go out there, it's signed accordingly. That's why we have three more for the Saturday. Once again, for the entire area, the occupied, the peak occurred at three p.m. Saturday with fifty-nine occupied. The lowest occupancy was thirty-five at six o'clock, and the range was fairly steady between thirty-five and fifty-nine throughout the, all the hours that were studied. So there was not a low vacancy. Conversely, going to the vacant for the air site, the peak occurred at six p.m. with a hundred and thirty-six spaces vacant. There were a hundred and twenty-three vacant at eight a.m., excuse me, and in the nine o'clock to five thirty range, which encompassed the entire period, vacancy ranged between a hundred and twelve to a hundred and twenty-seven spaces. That's total metered parking as well as permit parking. In terms of, okay, discuss that. In terms of vacant permit only in lot number six, there were ten spaces vacant at eight a.m. in the morning, and nineteen vacant at six p.m. For the vacant metered spaces, there was forty to fifty-six, forty at three o'clock and fifty-six at eight o'clock. Consequently, once again, looking at the need for seven spaces for the commercial aspect with four fifty-six vacant in those timeframes, there's not an adequate vacancy. Okay, so in conclusion, I note that the, once again, highlighting the one space for residential, six spaces for commercial out of the seven space variance. The twenty-four hour permit lot number six had a range of ten to nineteen vacant, inadequate to satisfy the one we need. And the commercial variance uses spaces, and the vacant was forty to fifty-six. I would also note, and still slinging in my report, previously, I did the parking survey for the project at three seventy-eight to three eighty Millburn Avenue, three hundred feet down the street to the east of us. And I did a similar park survey for this, in fact, the survey for this application encompassed a lot of the survey I did for that other project. That project was before the Milburn Planning Board and was approved. However, because of being located three hundred feet east, that project, when I did the survey, three hundred feet further east, extended the walking distance to municipal, include municipal lot number five, which is next to the Dunkin' Donuts. Municipal lot number four, which is the Taylor Street municipal, which has both twenty-four hour permit as well as metered parking. So that project included a bigger area. That project needed a parking variance for twenty-two spaces. If I add those twenty-two spaces that planning board approved in that variance, seven were here for a total of twenty-nine. We, more than adequate parking vacancy in our, just our survey, to include what was needed for the variance for the project. And that doesn't even reflect that the other project would extend to municipal lots four and five. So that includes my findings from the December two thousand and twenty-three report. What I am going to hand out to now is a, because of all the time that went by, changes that reflected due to the hearth project, which was not being built when I did the original, but was built when I went out into February, March. I'm going to hand out a summary tables of the findings of the survey that I worked.
So we're going to mark this as A seven.
These were the surveys I did on February twenty eighth, which was a Friday, and February, excuse me, first, two thousand and twenty-five, which was the next day, Saturday. I did not have, because I had a detailed survey covering many hours, I knew what critical points were. Didn't have to go out there and put X miles on my feet to go around every thirty minutes. I could just focus in on the critical times. And what you can see on February twenty-eighth, it was nine a.m., eleven thirty a.m., which was typically on a weekday when I found my, around the time I found my peaks. I did go out at ten thirty p.m. to see what was happening when people, if we had residential people using it, what was happening at that time. Typically, you wouldn't see commercial permit parking there, you'd see resident parking. So on both of those days, I went out at those times. What had changed due to the hearth development from the surveys that I reported from two thousand and twenty-three, and what happened here, was the hearth development, which had fifty-three units and four thousand square feet of, ninety-seven spaces proposed in it, and it's at a parking ratio of one point seven spaces per unit, which conformed with what the ordinance required for that particular site. It was listed in their studies before. The, what had changed was terms of available parking and my study areas, which reflected the summaries, which would be a little bit more than I had before. What I noted as Area H on Spring Street, the angle parking, here's the site on Spring Street, here's the area, the angle parking across the street, municipal lot nineteen, went from eleven to five metered spaces. What happened then in lot number nineteen, where prior to that, there were eighty spaces. This was changed as part of this hearth division, went from permit to seventy-five, and they changed four spaces near the previously seven, but inside the lot to metered spaces. So it stayed as eighty, but instead of being a permit, permit, it went seventy-five and five metered. The other aspect was along the hearth, in this area going towards Douglas on the north side of the street, because of the elimination, it went from six spaces to nine in the survey area. So they were, it went from eleven to ten here, and you gained three there, so there's a difference, I think of, how should we, two. What I found here, if we take a look at Table Two Eight, what's important is the column A, where, column A, J is municipal number six, that's the twenty-nine, twenty-four hour permit spaces. If you look at vacancy, to the occupied, I'm saying occupied, you can see nine, nine it's thirteen, eleven thirty a.m. it's fourteen, six p.m. it's thirteen, and at ten thirty occupied is nineteen. If you go to Table Three A, just below it, that the third column, vacant permit spaces, this is vacant now, in lot number six, twenty-nine spaces available, you can see nine to six p.m. period, it's fifteen to sixteen, and the vacant at ten thirty p.m. in the evening is eight. When you compare these, my original survey, at the ten thirty p.m., I did not go out in the late evening. But those other time periods, if I read them off of you, but the numbers are fairly similar, within just, sometimes are difficult, sometimes the difference of only a couple of cars. So they're very, very similar to what I got two years ago. Go back and pay, which was Saturday, and table, oh, I would just like, I forgot what it is. In terms of the total vacancy for the project in study area, if you go to Table Three A, first column, vacant spaces in total survey area, you can see they range ninety-three, fifty-five, ninety-seven, in the evening it's ninety-six. And once again, you can see the on-street, the second column, on-street, in the survey area, fifty-six spaces available. area, fifty-six spaces available. It, the lowest note, it was thirty-one at six P. M., and it's the highest at nine A. M. at forty. Once again, that would be a concern for the six spaces for the commercial part of the project. We have far more than enough spaces available to accommodate the commercial part. Now, go to Saturday, which is the next page. What's in? You can see the occupied on the top part, J, that's twenty-nine spaces. You can see occupied, nine A. M. is fourteen, eleven thirty, it's twelve, six P. M. at ten. At ten thirty, I believe, there were sixty-six occupied. You would have thought that's the residential, and that's what was there. Go to table five, five A's below it. In terms of vacant parking spaces, go to the third column, this is lot number six, six four hour, and you can see all the numbers, fifty, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-three. In comparison. Just give me one second. Look back at the study, going back to two thousand and twenty-three. If I look at Saturday, for example, the permit on middle lot, which is important, the nine o'clock two years ago, it was ten spaces vacant, fourteen now. At eleven thirty, fourteen, now it's twelve. At six P. M., eighteen two years ago, now there was ten. So the numbers are still indicating that we have more than adequate capacity based on these services. So that lot never full. And meanwhile, the area-wide parking on the on-street, metered parking, was more than adequate parking available at every single time to accommodate small parking areas that we need. And the data, two years ago, updated recently, and I would note, I can look back to the project I did three hundred feet away, a couple of numbers were not that dissimilar. So that's what I, I was very, very thorough on this.
Thank you for this thorough report. Once more now, officially, for the eighteen spots required by the variance, right? There's twenty are required, we get a two.
Correct.
Spot credit because of the E. V., the two E. Vs. So only eighteen is required. We need to make up a deficit. How did you get to only needing one for residential from eighteen?
Okay, first of all, there's eleven spaces, and we need eighteen after the two E. V. credits.
Seven in the.
Right, there's seven in the garage.
Right.
And that's associated with the residential. And the two E. credit is associated with the residential, it's part of that part of the building. So you actually started the, that you tend by the residential.
Wait a minute, so this is where the disconnect is. So there are seven in the building that are proposed, seven spaces.
Seven spaces related to the residential, four more spaces that are related to the commercial.
Oh, the tandem, got it. The tandem.
But E. V. spaces are within the residential part. Commercial doesn't get a credit for it. It comes in the calculation for the residential. So the residential, starting at the R. S. I. S. calculation, was ten, take off two for the E. V., that means you need eight. Seven are provided, there's a difference of one, that's how you get there.
Okay, just explain the fact that the E. V., you decided to utilize your E. V. credit for residential when you could have utilized the, correct?
I would prefer to say, but you.
Technically, right.
Technically, but I think logically, the E. V. is within the residential part of the parking structure. And therefore, it's logical to apply it to the residential. Consequently, there were ten spaces by ordinance, municipal ordinance, needed for the commercial. We're providing four, that's a deficit to six. No credit for E. V. on that. Six on one side, one for the residential, there, there's seven credit. And then when I do the parking, these are some extent indicate calling out parking lot number six, which is the twenty-four hour lot. That's the only nearby permit parking that's twenty-four hour that could accommodate a residential use, which would be overnight. Whereas a commercial use would be during the early evening, like for an employee. Consequently, it would be more suited for lot number nineteen, which doesn't allow parking two thirty five.
Question, Keller has stated, we can count on the other little building, building block to be in the future, and we can probably close to forty feet tall. I think he just said that. Does your survey take into consideration that there may be other residential needs coming in the near future block, as stated previously by Mr. Keller? That's the anticipate.
No, it doesn't. And you can't account for what's going to happen, and never been for a board. We're here now. We can't project what, what should we have four or five years down the road? Well, you have excess capacity now. There's a lot of vacancy on.
Mr. Maltz, why, could you explain that? Why shouldn't we take into account what's going to happen here?
The application is before you right now, and I presented a survey of what's happening today, and to accommodate our particular needs. In terms of a master planning, and I'm a master, work on transportation master plans, policies. Yes, you do project four, five, or ten years. There's a master plan, you know, trying to figure, and take a look at what you'd like to get. Application's been gradually during a time period, and you can accommodate those particular needs. You can't have somebody come in and say, oh, twenty-year report, we got a parking garage, I want you to build part of a parking garage.
That's fine, but you mentioned three seventy, Milburn Avenue, across the street.
Right.
They all had a place, like the overnight golf place.
Right.
There are, I think, three apartments in that, and I think.
On the very top.
Bedroom apartments, all assigned one space each. Does that everybody make sense?
It, I think they're assigned one space to each on-site. However, I think in terms, I'm trying to remember now, in terms of the twenty-six variance for parking that the Planning Board had to grant, I think I took into account that there were more spaces that might have been required, and that's part of the twenty-two. And I reflected that in what I discussed in my report.
I mentioned that, it's just because I know that the backyard of that, to see what the parking was, because they had so many parks, with businesses that run there.
And it's an.
Run there, with their office and commercial. If you were to do that apartment, you would probably think there are two dry, but at least of those three apartments, we would have spaces across the street at lot number six, because it's twenty-four hours, right?
Correct.
So I think going to this Truitt's question, when we start building, building lot twenty-six, only has twenty-nine spots, as you testified, not six, I'm sorry, twenty-nine spots. They gotta go somewhere, right? It's gonna.
At some point, yes. But I would think in terms of master planning, the municipality would start planning ahead to provide a, accommodate that.
But isn't that what the master plan says about what this project is? Should they create spaces on their project?
I don't, they're asking for a small variance on parking. There's a study to identify that there's more than adequate vacancies, both permit and metered within the area, the same as I did for the other project three hundred feet The purpose of the variance is to prove that we can accommodate it. Trying to get, trying to get a handle on your, on your question. I'm not trying to be evasive.
No, we're, no, actually, you're very, very thorough. But I mean, again, we're, we have a finite number of available parking. If we want to look at that in Milburn, we seem to be developing or going to, as Mr. Keller pointed out, and this is true in a property project, that somebody's accumulating those indoor lots, and we'll get more housing.
Well, they're gonna have to look to provide, there is additional capacity, even with our project, as you see from members. They aren't using up the last space. There is quite a bit of additional parking, both as well as metered. Just like the hearth, they provided, they conformed. They provided one and three-quarter spaces per unit, as well as the number of spaces they've acquired for the sale. That's all in there. Whatever projects come in, they're gonna have to design to accommodate what they need for, and if they have a shortfall, they're gonna have to do something like, if they do a job right, they're gonna have to do something like they did to identify, is enough capacity, vacancy, to accommodate their shortfall? And if not, how are they to get around? I think, I think that's the best answer. I mean, I do a lot of work in Madison, I'm a natural consultant, Morris Plains, they have projects, residential projects that come in that don't meet the R. S. I. S. but in Madison in particular, they, New Jersey Transit train station, and a lot of the projects are near the downtown, within walking distance, the train station. Consequently, they've had a number of projects that have lease restrictions of one space per unit, regardless of how many bedrooms there are. And that's, so if somebody wants to live there, they know, moving in to sign a lease, that this is what I'm going to restrict it to. Now, they can get a permit, purchase a permit, and they do have a lot of municipal lots in downtown Madison, various distances from the transit station. But that's something that's very, very, development, they've been quite active on development in their downtown. And I do the reviews, I can testify this firsthand.
Well, I mean, a lot of homes in this region seems somewhat more affluent than, say, inner city or the side of New York. So you would think that they would, but probably a husband and wife, a bunch of cars, even though they might take the train to Manhattan or something, right?
Yes, but we're not talking about townhouse condo here. If the project down the street, three apartments rentals, what we're talking about in this project are, I have four new rentals. And it is true, yes, you have the three bedrooms, you can have that second car, but then again, you also have nearby mass transit, which, which even Jersey Transit has publication which identifies that you can get up to thirty percent less parking demand, you know, or requirement because of the availability of nearby mass transit. So it does reduce the need.
Complain, or would your client consider taking the internal tandem spaces and reconfiguring them to make them all residential? And then the business, you know, anything related to the business could be purchased permit parking, the, you know, surrounding lots.
I understand what you're saying. I didn't have any discussion at all with my client, but four tandem spaces identified for the, the, only need one to conform to the residential. So you're giving away three right there, and you're pushing that out on the street for the metered parking. I think it's appropriate to leave it the way it is.
This is a new building, right? This hasn't been developed yet.
No.
Right?
Correct.
Did your survey take into consideration that one of the designated spots is a handicap parking? So residents who are not handicapped really, really park there. So that is going to reduce on most days, the interior parking to seven, I'm sorry, to six. There's, but one of them is, is retained for those who have a handicap, I'm sorry, hate that word, but for people who have designated parking because of disability. So really, you've got six spaces in there, except for that person.
Well, technically, we're allowed to, we're allowed to count it, you can't, you don't subtract it. But I understand practicality of what you're saying. Even if we took that away and said, we only had six, and you want to ignore that they're actually available, which we're entitled to, have, you're saying, instead of one, you need two twenty-four hour permit spaces. And my study has clearly shown, we have far more spaces available than two in lot number six. We can accommodate, accommodate that.
Just something to consider. And, and will the, will the owners pay for residents to, their parking? Yeah, the park, I mean, if there's, I mean, some people will have, will like race for parking those spaces.
I have the applicant's attorney. I don't know the answer to that. I hope I haven't put my mind to sleep with the numbers.
Any other questions on the board? Any questions from the public? I, Rich will be coming up to testify as the planner. I think given the time, that it's almost ten o'clock at night, and ordinarily, any new testimony after ten, I don't, makes sense to start new testimony now. I'm thinking that we should just, you this, and Eileen will tell us what the next available date would be.
While Eileen's looking for that, just as a follow-up to the question from Mr. Maltz, it was in that we would have two of the parking, parking, the unit, as part of their lease, would, one, three units, three would get one car. And the two units would get up, up to two cars. So, so obviously, if somebody needed a handicap, they would get that handicap assigned. If there's no one using a handicap, that will go vacant, it does count as part of our demand. But by, you would get a certain number of space, at least one, and some units, up to two units would get two space assigned as part of the lease. It's anticipated that somebody needs a second car, they can, they would use it themselves. Why build that fee into the structure for all of the tenants for their rents if they need that extra, they would, they would then pay for that spot? But it's also anticipated that if they really needed the two-car car, it probably goes to the hearth, where there's more parking available. So you're providing for a range of units, amenities and sizes within the community, and there are other places with regard to the future developments. One thing to do, it was pointed out, we are a building attached to an old building, so we don't really have access to two sides. It's anticipated that the way those other, aggregate the block, they'll probably have access to two streets, in which case, it'd be a little easier for them to provide their required, because they could do sort of a through parking, access off of one, on the other, or because of the geometry, it's anticipated that they would probably come closer to their parking demand. Part of our limit is that we're trying to keep that historic building, so we're not really starting from a fresh, creating a whole new building, because we're trying to keep that nineteen twenty building intact. So I think I can do my testimony, I can talk a little bit about anticipating some development. But it is anticipated, it was carefully thought out by the owners, that they would assign a certain number of parking spaces to each unit by lease. And if they want to do something after that, it's on them. We would not be opposed necessarily to convert all of those spaces to residential, or felt strongly. I don't think we need to, but certainly, within the downtown, it's pretty common to have both parking required, the workers, and they're already required by five ways, even though they don't, as well. And that would allow you to convert all of, all of this is to be residential. But that, we can certainly discuss if the board wants to go there. That was a question that was raised.
Rich, can I just follow up on that? It's just from Sarah's question. If that was the case, would you be locked into using the tandem spaces, or you be able to have more flexibility to provide, let's say, parking all for the residential and not have to rely on tandem spaces required? You don't have to answer it now, just.
I, I can about that. I, I think that regardless, if we made it all residential, I could do residential tandems, might be able to turn that ninety degrees and the garage door. But I think I would still keep four spaces tandem, not. But I think I would still keep four spaces tandem in that case. So you'd have, it'd be complicated, but I think that there is a possibility, and we can certainly look at that.
Eileen. Well, fortunately, we only have this meeting in May. This is the only meeting we have in May. The two meetings that are scheduled, I, only because I don't foresee this taking only fifteen more minutes. I would probably not be, not be able to move until July fourteenth, which is our first meeting in July.
Okay.
The two that, one, potentially, definitely one, the other withdrawing.
What did you ask?
Oh. You're, you're available, okay.
So that, that works for you? So yeah, so this matter is going to be carried without their notice to the meeting on July fourteenth, and we will be in the same location, the Melbourne Board of Education, Education Center, four thirty, Melbourne Avenue, seven P. Thank you. Okay. Are there any matters from the public not related to anything that was presented to the board tonight? I don't see any, hear any. Would someone like to make a motion to close this meeting?
So moved.
And do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you.